I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask that everyone remains standing for a moment of silence for George Griffin, the father of instructional assistant Wendy O'Connell, and for Rita Fahey, the mother of our former in --
Technology.
Thank you. Please be seated. Meeting is officially called to order. This is the December 18th Clinton School Committee meeting. This is our favorite meeting when we get to recognize so many people doing so many great things, but first let's get some business out of the way. Can I have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? And can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on November 27th?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Do we have a student rep here tonight?
No, Sham and I are still celebrating his acceptance to Harvard University.
No days off.
Do we have a representative from the PTA tonight?
Christine, I apologize. It just sent you an email. I totally forgot.
It's all good. People show up. They weren't, we were talking. Just kidding. So we've had the pretty successful beginning of the winter so far. We held our pottery night a couple of weekends ago at the middle school for the community, and it was a pretty good start. We're going to make it an annual thing, and hopefully it'll get bigger and bigger each year. We had two dances at the elementary school Friday night for the little ones and then second through fourth grade. Very, it seemed to be a hit. They had a great time. They have a lot of energy.
Some danced, some were sliding.
Exactly, yep. They had fun. We're wrapping up our gift card program. The pickups are tonight. I just left poor Kate over there. And that's, those fundraisers, I mean, we made a good amount of money and the gingerbread shop too that we had, the elementary. And honestly, I prefer to do those things because it's a little bit more work, but no one's selling anything. It's just pure profit, and it's fun for everyone. For the rest of the winter, we're going to plan some dances at the middle school, and we will be planning our second trivia night for the spring, which we're pretty excited about. We're also going to partner with Steam for Girls at the middle school. They want to do a fundraiser for them, and PTA would gladly support them, and they asked to partner up, so we said that would be great. We're not quite sure what, they want to do some sort of a parent-kid trivia night, so that would be nice. And I think that's it.
Any questions for Christine? Thank you very much for all your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially it's Parents Advisory Council tonight, CPAC? No, okay. Anything from the CTA?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. And a public comment? As always in our meetings, if we need to revisit things at the end, we certainly can.
Joel, I'll just share briefly. I just maybe relay some public comments that I received. On, I know on Friday, there was some concern regarding some posts that were going around on social media, and I think that we, you know, we tried to, you know, address them, I think, throughout the day on Friday. I just want to reiterate, though, take the opportunity to reiterate, that, you know, student safety is our number one priority, and that if there were a scenario where there was any type of threat or risk to students, we would communicate that immediately. I think that this was just a sort of unfortunate series of events where there were some pieces that people were kind of connecting together that didn't really go together, and it kind of led to this stir on social media. I am going to meet with our administrative team tomorrow at our admin meeting, and one of the things we're going to discuss is how we can best respond to that social media type of stuff when it comes up in the future, because we do feel that you'd be delicate when you respond to things like that, because you don't want to run the risk of almost making something worse by coming in and saying the wrong thing or setting something up. But we also need to be aware that that is, you know, it is how a lot of communication is shared these days, and that if there's something that is misinformation on social media, that we can't just ignore it. So we'll reflect on that practice and try to come up with a better protocol, so that the next time any type of situation like this arises, we're better prepared.
Thank you. It's, social media is a challenging world, to be sure. Well, let's move forward with, oh, one other thing that I did want to mention too. I wanted to make sure that I recognized Mr. Morrison and the team that put together the bridge-crushing project as the kickoff to the Gale Force teams, and the, there were so many people, of the many blessings we have in the town of Clinton, that the support that we have from the extended community is just such a show of strength and always appreciated. And Mr. Morrison as the emcee, Mr. DeVal, Mrs. Zapantis, who is ill tonight and wished she could be here, Ms. Gottesman from the ITOM, and Ms. Cash, and we had so many other volunteers, and extending that to the community to give scout troops and middle school kids through the wind block, and a certain school official and his child, who won an award, I think, is just a great way to provide an authentic STEM experience and help everyone learn a little bit more about this terrific program that Clinton has been such a leader in. So I just want to make sure that I take a second to thank everyone involved, and particularly Mr. Morrison, for all of his efforts in continuing to make that program such a stellar opportunity for kids.
Joel, if I may, the next available date for like a first event, January 6, I believe it is, yeah?
Yep.
And that's open to the public as well, and any teachers, any parents? That's when we will officially find out what the rules are for this year. It's a fun day, so if people can make it, I'll get details on it, make sure it's like on the website and everything like that for the start time. It's in the morning, I'm not sure exactly what time.
I know breakfast is served. They'll have refreshments.
Yep.
Terrific. And we have a long history of involvement in that program and developing future engineers, and long may it continue. So, thank you for your patience. We're here to recognize students and staff, and let's start with the students of the month, and I'd ask Mr. Rulo to come up and represent Clinton Elementary School.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Today, I am honored in order to talk with a young lady from grade three, Elizabeth Moratire. Elizabeth, come on up. Elizabeth is a third-grade student in Ms. Picarello's class, and she's an amazing writer who is inspired by the world around her. Elizabeth has described writing as a relaxation tool, and she has become truly inspiring to all of us at the school. In November, she wrote an essay on being thankful, and she read that over the intercom to the entire student body. Ms. Silvai, and along with her teacher, her parents, and everyone else are very proud of Elizabeth and all of her achievements. She's a very good student, and as I said, an aspiring writer to be. So maybe one day, she will be authoring a book, and we'll be reading hers in this library. So to Elizabeth, we are honored in order to have you, and it says, "Certificate of Achievement, Elizabeth Moratire, Elementary School Student of the Month."
Congratulations. Would it be okay if we shake your hand? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Rulo. And Mr. Seed.
So unfortunately, our student of the month couldn't make it this evening. She's not feeling well. This kind of ties into essay writing. Our student of the month is Kelly Pugh. She's an eighth grader at Clinton Middle School. She came to us last year as a seventh grader, very shy, quiet, you wouldn't even know she was there. And we're very excited to say that she's come out of her shyness and is fitting in very well as an eighth grader. She just came to DC, and it was just amazing to see how different she is. But she's being recognized tonight because she wrote a beautiful essay as part of an essay contest with the VFW, and she won at the district level. And they were so impressed with the essay that she wrote that it's now going on to the state level, and hopefully it'll go further. So we want to congratulate Kelly Pugh on her achievements at the Clinton Middle School.
And from Clinton High School, Mr. Hastings.
Yeah.
And Ms. Cash.
I'm going to ask Ms. Myford to come up with, you should read the crowds. I'm a drama teacher. So I asked Ms. Myford, she would read and present to you our CHS Student of the Month.
I just couldn't keep my mouth shut about this. I had to write about her.
Right camera, so.
Our student of the month is Kelly Perfetto, senior at Clinton High School. I've known her since middle school, when I was subbing. Kelly embodies our core values of independence, responsibility, integrity, creativity, confidence, and respect. She gives tirelessly of her time and effort to a wide variety of school activities, including band, drama club, contemporary music club, National Honor Society, and first robotics. She takes initiative, works hard, and often contributes to projects behind the scenes. She frequently asks if there is anything she can do to help during the unglamorous setup and cleanup for community events. And she takes charge and shows initiative when other students need guidance or are confused. During her time at CHS, Kelly has developed into a take-charge, independent, caring young lady. She so exudes an air of confidence, even if she doesn't feel it, that she has a devoted student fan club that cheers for her at school events. Although Kelly says she isn't sure why this is, it's obvious that her leadership is apparent among our students. Although, although Miss Kelly's many valuable contributions to our school, and she goes to WPI, we just found that out, I look forward to watching Kelly accomplish even more in the coming years after she graduates from CHS.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations on WPI.
Yeah, I just thought.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I hope so.
You want to throw money around? I'm inviting Mrs. Cash, Assistant Principal. This is an honor, because I don't know if we've done in my time the CHS Staff of the Month. We may have, but I just can't recall doing this. And I just, on purpose, this whole thing, when being from Clinton and we're so intermarried and so on, it's just because her daughter is married to my nephew has nothing to do with it, okay? Nothing to do with it. We're honoring this evening is our first CHS Staff of the Month, Karen Duffy, our Director of the CHS Cafeteria. Karen is a really special person, and she's one of the first staff members here each and every morning. And even on early, excuse me, delayed, the snow delays of two hours, she's still here at the same time every morning to prepare for the day. She is able to adjust to schedule changes, drop of a hat, which sometimes affects up to 450 students, as well as her staff coming in, and does this all without any complaints. Her leadership with her staff, which reflects in a very positive and friendly atmosphere, which is certainly visible and felt by all our students. She responds respectfully to the needs of students who are in need, who are without sometimes, and struggling. She does so with respect to the students, always maintaining their credibility. She is always there after hours too, for all the activities that go on at Clinton High School throughout the year, whether it's feeding all the staff on opening day, the tri-council meetings, the latest and new business breakfast here at CHS, and over the years, when we've had MCAS breakfast preparing our freshmen and sophomores for the big test. As a person, she is always cordial, polite, and always cool in every way. We are glad to honor Karen Duffy. No congratulations?
No.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Karen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking care of all silly requests. You can invite them to maybe go out and take a picture?
Yeah. So we have some other business to attend to. We would like to maybe catch a picture together of all of our recipients tonight, perhaps best done in the hallway. You're certainly welcome to come back to the meeting as well. Do not feel that you have to. You will not be offended if you don't sit through it. So thank you again, everyone, for all of the work that you've done. Congratulations, and thanks for being part of the Clinton Public Schools. Just in the hallway, sir. No, no, you can come back, but just if you want to get a picture of everyone together.
Yeah, just reply to that one too.
We're going to keep meeting, but I just, if you wanted to get something for the ITOM.
So I should go ahead and ask you to come back?
No.
I'll save my stuff then.
Why don't we take just a two-minute break while, so that we can make that happen? No, sorry. We'll just take a two-minute break while they get that organized, and then people may want to come back again.
Maybe.
Should kill that.
Russ, you're going to be next on the agenda when they come back, if you want to. Congratulations, girl.
Hold on. You also got a one, can I?
You got one?
Yeah. We need a minute, though, it's processing.
You got 30 seconds each on each one of these things under your report.
That's about my plan. District strategy might take a little more. The other ones, I'm trying to go about 30 seconds.
To all of our home viewers, I want to say, thanks for hanging in there with us. This is truly exciting, must-see TV. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll reconvene. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. So, as you know, the town is excited that we have a new Director of Facilities onboard. The Director of Facilities position is the new position that we've worked collaboratively, I guess, over the last, I guess, year or so about, you know, formulating that position. And it'll be a Director of Facilities that's encompassing the entire town, so the school department included. We shared the resume with you and announced who the person was last meeting, but is here to join us tonight, tell us a little bit how it's going. So Russ Carlstad, our Director of Facilities.
Thanks for having me.
Nice to meet you.
So I spent the last couple of weeks just going around, meeting people, getting introduced, just trying to scratch the surface, seeing what we have, where we can go. It's very promising. It looks like this is the right time for the position, and just can keep moving forward and improve the situation we already have. Very happy with what I've seen to date, and I think we just keep building on that.
Thank you very much. Do any of you have any questions?
Here's, we're going to jump in right in. We've had a few heating issues and a couple of things that have come up, and getting involved, working on some rug replacements and stuff.
Spending money already. Moving forward.
So office squared away yet? Are you?
Me, no, I'm still between the town hall and the school.
We got to get him into the central building.
So we're working on it. Moving around, getting a spot. Everyone wants him to be in their building.
So just, Dr. Meyer, if you would, just a, you know, capsulated overview of Mr. Carlstad's position and how that works in terms of the relationship with the town and the school department?
Yeah, so I think the Director of Facilities position is something I'm real excited about. I think a lot of times in a town setting, you might have like a school system, Director of Facilities, and then maybe the town has a Director of Facilities that's separate, or they have their own department that's looking at that. And I think it can lead to a lot of, kind of almost, competition within the town, let's say, over limited capital improvement funds, and people trying to lobby over what's more important, what's not. I think this position is a great position towards building that collaboration in the town, where it's someone who can have that expertise to really be able to help us establish a true capital plan, establish, you know, preventative maintenance plans, try to make sure that, you know, when we're making repairs or when we're replacing equipment, we're doing it wisely and making sure that we're not just, you know, just because a salesman says we need it, we're not just doing it. And not just always, you know, putting out fires, but really planning on preventive maintenance and being proactive in the maintenance and upkeep of all our buildings. So, you know, I think it's an exciting position. You know, it's technically, I guess, the position reports to the town administrator and myself.
Correct.
But we're kind of, you know, I think the whole vision of it is to really be a team and make sure that we're working the best thing for the town, and making sure that we're protecting and maintaining all the assets that the town has.
Great. Look forward to hearing about all of your progress, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you.
To see you again.
Nice meeting you, thank you. See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, just a quick update on the security cameras at the elementary school. They show, I think it was December 12th, last Tuesday, they came to start the install. They've run all the wires. They have not installed the cameras yet. I think he was waiting on getting some of the camera pieces in. I know they've been in contact with Mike, our IT Director, to start making sure that we're going to be able to integrate it right into the, you know, everything's going to integrate smoothly into all our networks. So there's progress along there. I think they're just waiting for some of the actual hardware, but that's underway. So hopefully it'll be up and running soon. Under grants, there's a couple of things. There is another, I don't know if it's another or very similar, but it's an Urban Agenda grant that is being offered. This grant is due by December 22nd, and this is something that Mr. Duffy and I met and talked a little bit about, and I think we're going to try to apply for this grant. This is similar to the grant I think they was looking at last year. They'll be looking at sort of like a feasibility study to look at the maker space in terms of a, in terms of fire station, in terms of like a maker space vocational type partnership area, to look at the feasibility, not only of the building itself, but also of the feasibility of those partnerships. So I think it's kind of a twofer, and we'll be able to see, you know, I think it's necessary information, so if we can get that grant, get that grant and get that feasibility study, we'd have a good sense of, you know, one, what is it going to be the cost to redo the building, and then two, is there potential for this kind of maker space workforce vocational stuff in those partnerships to develop? So those are areas that we're, you know, it's not, you know, it's a good faith effort, I guess, in the grant, that we expect that this is a feasible, is something that would be feasible, but the purpose of the grant is the feasibility study and not necessarily committing us to anything beyond that. The next grant is our CALP grant, that's the Clinton Adult Learning Center, and I know that Kristin Cordio is here to talk a little bit about her grant. This is a, this is a big grant for her. She's been kind of stressful. It's once every five years, and it is probably one, it's the primary funding source, I think, for the, for the, for the adult learning center. So I'll let you briefly talk a little bit about the grant.
Yeah, so as Dr. Meyer said, it's, the five-year cycle is up. So we're funding, I'm writing for the funding for the next school fiscal year for five years. Secured funding, if the state, you know, budget is there, so this is competitive right now for us. It's a tedious time for us, because, you know, depends on the funding of the program. So I am asking for slightly more than what we've had in the past, about $50,000 more, to increase the intensity of what we offer, because currently we're just doing six hours a week, morning and evening, and students need more than that in surveying them. They indicated that they wanted more time and were able to commit to more time. So that's where most of the increase is going. We're also trying to expand other opportunities with citizenship preparation classes and distance learning opportunities that will also help with increasing intensity for the students. So those are some of the reasons why, where that funding is going, the rationale for increasing. It is competitive right now. As far as I know, there's only three programs in our region that are applying. I think our chances of getting the grant are very good. We've been here for 40 years. We've been receiving the funding for 40 years, so I can't imagine they would take it away without a reason. So what I need tonight is, I do have, I'm working on it, the budget is done, I'm just responding to all the questions that are in the grant, and if there's any of that that you want to see, I'd be happy to send that along to you, but it is due the 22nd, same day as the Urban Agenda grant. I'm hoping to submit it tomorrow before I go home, and I do need signatures, so I need the School Committee Chair to sign off. This is a statement of assurances, just saying that we will abide by the regulations that are put forward in the grant. And then we're supposed to hear by March or April as to whether or not we're funded, and at that time, most likely, I will be rewriting the budget all over again, because the chances of them giving exactly what I say are very slim. Maybe they'll give us more, but I doubt it. If they give us what we have, then we're good, and if not, I have contingencies that I can, you know, do, so that if we get less than what I asked for, we'll still be okay, and at least be able to offer what we've been offering.
And if you ever do look at the budget, there is quite a big sum of money in there that looks like it comes from the school district itself. However, most of that, basically all of that, is kind of what we'd call in-kind, so it's looking at basically the space they use in that building, and what would we, what is that valued at if we were going to charge rent, maybe portions of different people's salary for handling payroll and that kind of stuff. So that's kind of how we figure that out, so, you know, the program really is self-sufficient.
Thank you. Any questions?
You said most of the students, that six hours is not, they want to do more than six hours per week? That's, I mean, I'm assuming most of the students are probably, you know, working just, yeah.
They are. It was surprising, in all honesty, when we did this survey with them, that even, especially the evening students, because those are the ones that are working full-time.
Right.
That they would be willing to do an extra hour. So what we did was, we kind of, for this, I compromised, we're adding, I'm proposing that we add an extra day in the mornings. The morning students said yes, an extra day or more hours, because we go three hours each night, so I'm adding another hour a week onto the evening, and another day. So, I'm adding another hour a week onto the evening and another day onto the morning. If it's approved, that's what will, that's what we increased and plus the additional digital online literacy that we can, we can support.
Just, I think just speaks to the way you're running the program that they want, that they want, you know, an extra hour. So, it's great.
Yeah.
Please extend our thanks and appreciation to everyone involved in the program and thank you for developing such a great resource for our community.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
I know you got to run because you actually have classes in session.
Back to work.
Couple of other quick grant updates. The Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, we did apply for that one and that was a $20,000 application. We were awarded 15, so we did get, received the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant. This is different. Last year's was, it was like part A, which was a planning grant. This year we're on part B, which is more of an implementation grant. So, we're able to use the funds a little bit differently. The next grant was the Project Lead the Way. We applied to try to get some training to implement a engineering design course and a robotics course at the elementary school. Probably something that the proposal now is that those would be courses that we could run as enrichment courses during the wind block as we kind of pilot them and see how it goes. And we were not awarded that grant yet, but we moved on to the next phase in that grant process. So, the next phase is due in January. And the Massachusetts State Science and Engineering Fair and Curious Minds Initiative, we were awarded, was it $1,000?
Yes.
Yeah, $1,000. Oh, yeah, you were at the meeting. So, we were awarded $1,000 through that grant to support the middle school science fair, which is, which is coming up. I don't, Eddie, I don't know if you want to say anything about that or?
Yeah, March 29th? Is that the date we decided on today? Yeah. We, so we had just met this morning, going over some of the details. It's our third year. So, I think this year, we want to send the winners of the, of the fair, see if they can move on to statewide competition. Last two years, we didn't do that. We were still kind of learning how to run the whole event. So, so, yeah, we met this morning, working on some details on it, but so far, it's, everything's going well and it's planned for, for March 29th at the, at the middle school.
And that's, that's open to?
Open to the public.
No, but in terms of the competition piece, is that children throughout the district or is it limited to?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know what the grade, like cutoff. Six, seven, eight, okay. Yeah, I think George Martinez, who's involved in first, is all, he's a judge for the?
Oh, for the Worcester Regional?
Yeah, right, yeah. So, he's been, he's been giving us a hard time about getting some, some projects up there. So, this is the first year we're going to, we're going to try to get some there. It'd be good.
Seems like a, a next step in the evolution of it. It combines an art show as well, is that correct?
Yeah, that's A in the STEAM is for art. So, we have, was it Coral Stevenson? She, the art teacher there. So, basically, we have the projects, you guys have met some of them. They have, they're along, the presentations are along the side and then the art exhibits, we just kind of try to like intermingled them like throughout while people are walking through so they can just look at the artwork that some of the students put together.
Anything else on grants?
One last grant update I'll give you real quick and then if you, the Perkins Grant that we've been working back and forth, we were awarded that one today as well. I got that email today. So, I have to go in with many revisions of our Perkins Plan and Grant to get it so that we fit the right, check the right boxes off. We now, we now have received that funding.
How much is that?
Oh, you had to ask me that. I want to say it's about 20, right around $25,000.
That's great. Thank you for that, all that hard work.
Special education, so I know we talked a lot about looking at different consultants to work with us as we enter our coordinated program review. We are going to be doing the coordinated program review training. Kathy Buchanan and I have signed up for that. I think it's January 17th? 19th, thank you, to go get all the updates on how they're doing the, like the self-study component of it. And we've met with a couple of consultants. There is one that we want to sort of go forward with at this point. She's, she's done the, she's worked with other districts in this capacity. She's a former special education director and she wants to do it a little bit differently than a regular consultant. So, instead of charging just sort of a large amount for individual sets of days, we would work it more of like, almost like she was a temporary part-time employee and pay her more of a lower hourly rate. And when you break it down, looking at her proposal for the time and that she thinks would be necessary and for the scope of what we're asking her to do, we think it's going to be much more beneficial because she's going to be able to be in the district more frequently and for shorter increments of time to really be able to go look at different programs and see what's going on and help us as we, as we navigate the process. So, at this point, we do plan on, on moving forward with, with her unless there's any objections. I know I can get, I can bring a resume or anything like that. I know, I think, Mike, I know you've done some work with her in the past. I know you're aware of her qualifications. So, but we can, you know, I think that's, that's the direction we'd like to go. I think she seems like a very valuable resource and from a cost standpoint, I think much more effective than some of the initial consulting calls we got.
Any questions? It seems to me to make sense to leverage the opportunity to have someone, you know, as often as you might need them to go through that process and to proactively identify where we want to put energy and resources toward a successful CPR review. Okay.
District van, just a quick update on that. As you know, there was a van that was actually originally, I think, requested as a warrant article and then got moved into the budget by the, by the Finance Committee last year so that we were able to purchase that. It was ordered earlier in the year. The van is now in. I think they did the painting on the side at the little Clinton Public Schools and, and then the, right now, I think we're finalizing the registration and the insurance through the town hall. We have posted for a driver. We have interviews for the driver. It's been in the item, it's been online. That'll be, we have interviews coming up later this week. We are looking for multiple kind of part-time drivers just because we need to come up with some sort of redundancy system so that if someone's out, so if anyone is interested in that position, they can still reach out to me. And we have also identified two routes we're going to try to replace with the van for the second half of the year. One of them is an in-town route that kind of goes, that picks up students in town and brings them to the middle school. And one is transporting a single student to one of the placements in Lancaster. So, our thought is for the initial, this year, while we're working everything out, keep both of the routes that's going to replace local. It'll still be a substantial savings by replacing those two separate routes. It works fine with the timing and it also keeps the van close so that if there were, you know, a breakdown or anything like that, we're able to respond quickly until we kind of build up the system.
Great.
Can we explore if the transportation company that we have the existing contract with could be our backup?
Yeah, look in and see if we could still use them as like a sub-call or something. Yeah, yeah, I think we can try to, when we, probably when we reach out to them about, about the changes, we can try to build that in there.
All right, thank you.
A couple, just other, some other updates here. The Workforce Development Breakfast, we held that on December 7th. It was, I thought it was very well attended. We had a lot of people, a lot of good initial conversations, got some good feedback from it, even had, then there was the article in the paper. I even had, even today, I got, someone else reached out to me after seeing the article in the paper about how they could, you know, wanting to help. And I know someone that was at the, your meeting today for the science fair was someone that came from that, came to this event and asked how they could get involved and we reached out to them. So, I think we're trying to, trying to build those networks and I think that, you know, it was, it was a, it was a great, great event. And like I said, the cafeteria staff did a great job putting on a breakfast and I know it was kind of a little bit out of their, their normal wheelhouse and they did a nice job putting that together. The next two are kind of financial updates. So, Karen, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the FY '17 end-of-year report and the audit and the student activity accounts.
The FY '17 Department of Ed end-of-year pupil and financial report has been completed, submitted and audited. Happy to report that the second year enrolled, there was no findings. What I would just need is the signature of the school committee chairperson, the superintendent and the town accountant prior to submitting the certification statement to the Department of Ed. Those of you who do not know what the end-of-year report is, it ascertains that the financial information is prepared in accordance with required accounting basis and are verified to accuracy in the completeness of the reports. The other thing is the MABO review and that is set for that last week in January, probably going on to the second week in February. They're just setting up that team now. The student activity audit is in the workings, waiting for the auditor to let me know. Was trying to get it for January, but I think he's going to move it out a little because he's a little busy with the end-of-year reports. The student activities, student activity, their funds raised to finance activities of authorized student organizations, it's student funds to be used only for students. And I've given you a list of this current active student activity club for the middle school and the high school, which I'd like to get approved. And then also, Air Marie Sergeant has requested in writing, per the student activity guidelines, the discontinuance of one of the clubs, which is PAC 2000. The balance as of 11:30 was $9,835.27 and there's no, that no activity in this club since prior to 2014. And per the guidelines, we did the guidelines last year, the disposition of assets in inactive student activity club shall be determined by the school committee with the primary goal to be the benefit of the student body. And we're requesting the funds be transferred to the donations revolving account to be used for educational purposes at the middle school.
So, you should have, there should be, following the audit, there's a sort of a little list of high school student activity accounts and then the middle school student activity accounts with the vote for the inactive one. So, I guess we would need a motion to approve the current student activity accounts as they stand. And then probably a second vote to close the PAC 2000 account and to designate that money to the middle school gifts and donations fund. So, that would be?
So, the motion that we're seeking is to just, to continue the fact that we have these student activity accounts?
So, typically, what's supposed to happen for, for the student activity account procedures is they would say that the school committee is supposed to approve all the student activity accounts every year so that that way we can't just open one randomly. So, they haven't been approved.
They haven't been approved because we just did the guidelines.
Right.
We're just approving that these accounts exist as a name. It has nothing to do with the balance that they're carrying or?
You're just approving it where you're, you're comfortable with us having these accounts that, that students raise funds and deposit them in.
Because if they want to open a new, a new student activity, there's paperwork they have to do, they have to get signatures. So, we're trying to go to really follow the guidelines and so we'd like to, each year, get the approval by the school committee for the lists. And then this particular club has not seen any activity in a while.
And I'm sorry, what is the purpose of that club, the PAC 2000?
I don't even know. It hasn't been inactive since I got here.
Sounds like it was some sort of parent, if I had to guess, it was probably some parent advisory council, that's what PAC normally stands for, but from the year 2000. Who knows? It's been? Committee, okay.
Yeah, and? I don't even know if it should have been in there.
Yeah, probably in 2000, right?
And they no longer exist, so the money's just been sitting there.
Do you have any idea how it fell under student activities?
There, when the audit, I have already spoken to the auditor about a few things to look at because there are a few that I think maybe should be moved to donations account. So, that's, I have not brought the elementary school for that reason because the, I want the auditor to look at them before I have them voted on.
Okay, so, so, go ahead.
Well, I just, so it's been the same since 2014? So, it hasn't, so up until then, people were still collecting money into this account?
I don't really know because?
You're just saying, you're just only going back to 2014 because that's the last you could?
That's the only records that I have is from when I came. And when I came, it was just a balance that was given to me, an account, a list of accounts with the balance.
Okay.
As far as I know, when I became an administrator, PAC had disappeared even before then. That's eight years ago.
I mean, it's $9,800, I mean.
Yeah, so where do you want to transfer it to?
We want to transfer it to the donation account to be used for educational purposes for the middle school because it was a middle school student activity, so we'd like to designate it for the middle school. It is in the, in the student activity guidelines that we have, especially with regard to senior classes, we do have that in there that if the senior class does not designate it after a certain amount of years, that money by vote of the school committee will go to the donations for educational purposes. So, we did put wording in that for these reasons.
So, debated this prior to your election?
So, nobody from this organization can come back and be angry with us for dispersing that account now?
To my knowledge, I don't even know who to contact. Air Marie requested it and she gave me it in writing and that's what the guidelines state. That it has to be in writing, has to be over three years, has been over three years that there has been no activity.
No activity.
So?
And that's part of the, and I think that's part of the issue here is I think it probably, sort of, I think one of your questions was how this really fit even into a student activities account might have not even been sort of clear when it was established anyway. So, I think that, you know, right at this point, I think it's just something we're trying to clean up as we work through with the, with the, with the student activity accounts and prepare for that audit.
So, the donation account, that line item is under the master budget under middle school?
It's a revolving account donations, but I can designate it for the middle school, which I'd like to because it was their student activity, so I think it's only profitable to have it.
So, then that money could be used to support like the STEM fair or something else that was going to benefit the students in general, not necessarily for school equipment or anything, but for the students?
Yeah, because that's what we, we stayed in and it had to be for educational purposes for the students.
So, that's the second motion. So, for the first motion, all we are, all you're seeking is can we get a motion to approve these names for, to continue on as existing activity clubs under student activities?
Right, for middle and high school.
Mr. Shaw, I'll make a motion that we approve these names of clubs at the middle school and the high school.
Second?
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? All right, now the second motion you're seeking is, may have silvered our conversation and that is to?
The discontinuance.
To honor the request of Mrs. Sergeant to close this PAC 2000 account and relocate those funds to donations? Is that correct?
Donation revolving account, right, for the purpose of the middle school students.
For the purpose of the middle school students?
Right, because for educational purposes at the middle school. So, because it's going to be designated for the middle school educational purposes.
Yeah, well, all right, so let's entertain the motion first and then we can?
Okay, I will like to make a motion that we close the PAC 2000 club and move the funds into the donation line item.
Donation revolving account.
Donation revolving account.
Is there a second? And discussion? So, I guess my, my question is that for me, the differentiation, anytime you're talking about a student activity account based on the procedures and policy that we debated, I just think it's always cleaner if student activity funds, and I know that there's some gray areas to where this even came from, comes back to students. And so, you know, I don't know if that's accomplished through the donations, but maybe it's the kind of thing where we just need more information about, to the degree that there is some, you know, sort of where this money came from so it's as, as clean as could be.
Because some of the accounts in the student activity prior to me getting, that's why we did the guidelines, they're kind of a gray area on whether or not that should have been in the student activity to begin with because it's really supposed to be student clubs. And so, there was one that we'd already moved out because it was fundraising for technology. Diane Tana Cotton and I were like, this doesn't belong in there. So, we already moved that one out and that didn't really even need a vote because it was definitely not student activity. And the one that, the auditor, there are a few that I'm going to talk to him about and see if he thinks it should be moved.
No, I know and I appreciate the fact that, you know, there are a number, any one of a number of things where, you know, there's some, it's not clean in terms of how these are established, how they're laid out. Mrs. Sergeant, did you want to weigh in on that? Did you have any background that?
No, I was just curious and I didn't catch it before, but the student activity clubs for CMS, I don't see our drama or our chorus listed. Cora and Gosh, do you have that proof? Separate beginning chorus and this year, Priscilla come to about the drama?
Drama, I think. But I thought this was, I looked at what you gave me, but I can come back on the next one, but I didn't think that was...
So does it make sense to take up those extras that aren't represented here when we, when we deal with the elementary as well?
Yes.
Yeah, we can, we can still bring those, I mean, we can, we can revisit that at a later meeting, those extra ones, just so we clarify it, we get it done correctly. If they still exist, we're not going to close them, because we're not voting to close them. We just haven't voted to approve them yet. We'll bring them up at the next meeting when we look at the elementary stuff.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just, I'm still, I think, it sounds like in this donation account, it's a gray area as to what, what you can actually spend that money on.
Well, you can restrict the funds in donations.
Well, and that's my, and this is a good chunk of change here, and I don't know if there's any of these clubs that could use that money, and I, I'm just asking, I don't know, if, you know, I look at the DC trip, kind of comes to, kind of stands out, is there, is there a club here that could use that money rather than going into a general account that can be used? Student services seems to be pretty vague, and where, and I'm at, if there's nothing, if there's not a club that uses it, fine, but it seems to me, to give it to a club that could use the money rather than throw it into a general account.
The guy, I suppose, in the guidelines, that's what it designates, but I suppose the school committee is the right...
I couldn't, but would you say, I...
Could that go into the drama club and do the lights that we're looking to?
No, see, that's the problem, is like, student activity funds, and those just aren't supposed to be used for things like lights.
No.
Because, they're supposed to be, like, money in a student activity account is supposed to go back to the students.
To the students.
And the, and I think, and typically, that's going to be a lot of the same guidelines when you go with the gifts and donations. If anything, if anything, it would almost be the opposite, if it was moved in gifts and donations, we'd have a better chance of being able to use the donation money to do, like, lights for the...
We need your lights and sound system for our all-school plays.
Right, so if you put it in the donation account and just restrict it for educational purposes for the middle school, then you could use it for that. But if you kept it in the student activity, you could not, because that's not a, a student, it, it, it's not a student club, that's, you know, improving the school, it's not improving this, the club. So you have a better shot at using the money for the schools if you move it to the donations account, and that's kind of how we were figuring when we did the activity, the guidelines. And the guidelines were from MAS, though, I mean, we got them from...
No, I think we understand the guidelines, and we understand our procedures. I think, you know, what we're unclear about is the history of this particular account, and whether or not it actually had its roots in student activity funds. And, and for me, that's sort of the, the question that I have, that if, you know, it would make sense to me that if there were initiative through a, a parent's advisory council, that it might have come through some kind of, I don't know, I don't know where it might have come from, but it, it wouldn't necessarily seem to me like a student activity, you know, so...
That's what I mean.
So that's why I'm saying we need to get it out of there by closing it. And what we can do is, we can move the money into gifts and donations for now, if you're fine with it, and then maybe when we bring back the next round of it, we can kind of get, do a little more homework, and that way we can, we can clarify the, the purpose of it, and it can get some donations if we want to restrict the purpose more.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, that would make more sense to me, I think.
The fellow Tony, I forget what his last name was, who was it that did a very pry to me?
It did what?
Lucci.
Lucci, right, Tony Lucci. I could give him a call, but when I started here, it was just a list of the activities with that beginning balance, and that's the only information.
And again, we've spent a lot of time on it, I don't really think it's a big deal, I just want to make sure that, that we're, you know, that we're where we need to be. So, you know, given that stipulation, Dr. Meyer, does everyone feel comfortable enough to vote on the motion now? Okay. So, those in favor?
All right. And then we'll try to, we will try to reach out, maybe see if we can just get a little more history in that, and if there seems to be a special purpose that we want to clarify that the designation forward is.
And when they, when they do the audit, there may be some other areas that the audit is going to say we need to...
Yeah.
So we'll see when they do the audit.
Do you need me to sign?
I do need to sign, to allow me to do it now.
Sure. Do you want to go into the next area, Dr. Meyer?
Yep, I can start. So next one's just a topic, I just put pre-K down. We have, just so you know, we have been having meetings looking at pre-K, trying to look at different aspects of the pre-K, everything from transportation to are we, are classes being held at the optimal time, and, and what do we need to do? And I think where we end up finally landing is, I think we're going to plan on trying to keep our pre-K offerings and transportation things the same next year as they are this year. What we are looking at, though, is maybe changing a little bit of our registration process, so that it's a more of an initial kind of application process, where we try to get everyone to apply by a certain deadline, and then we can have time to get our screenings, and then, if necessary, we can do a lottery to fill some of those slots. Instead of, I think in the past, it's been a little more first come, first served, and that's been, I think it's posed, posed a few challenges. So I think the part we're going to work on restructuring a little bit this year is just going to be the, sort of the registration and initial application process, and then we'll continue to, once we kind of get those numbers, if, if we look at the, the number of applicants, we can revisit anything, any other issues we might have if we see what the, with the, what the level of interest is. But our goal right now really is, when we kind of really dug into, you know, how we're using the preschool transportation, you know, what we're being billed for, for those buses, but what those buses are actually doing throughout the entire day, looking at all those different things, it does seem as though it's, it is pretty efficient use of that right now. And, and then we also looked at the, we tried to look at some different configurations to see if maybe different configurations of days and times might work, but, you know, we've kind of felt that we might be putting the cart before the horse there, and we'd like to kind of go through this other process where we can get these applications and see what the true level of interest is first, before we revamp anything. Yep.
Who is the bus in four with the pre-K?
It is all four-year-olds and three-year-olds with special needs.
So we're providing transportation for all students going to preschool?
In, who are four. Three-year-olds do not, yeah.
Okay, so for all the four-year-olds?
Yeah.
We provide transportation?
Yeah. But when I looked into it, even though it's kind of billed separately on our, on our, on our bus contract, those buses are actually running, those same buses that will then do the pre-K pickups are actually running regular routes at the high school and the middle school, and even the elementary school, and then they go do their pre-K route. So really, if you look, that one bus that we get charged for, for pre-K transportation, is making, you know, four rounds in the morning, it's making midday rounds, and then it's making, I don't know if it does four in the afternoon or three in the afternoon, but it's, it's a lot more than just, just the pre-K. So we investigated that to make sure it was, like I said, it was being efficiently spent.
Great, thank you.
CES NEAS report, I did enclose the letter that we received from the NEAS NC, it was to Mr. Rulo about the five-year progress report for the NEAS accreditation for Clinton Elementary School. It highlighted some, some nice areas of improvement which are going for, and at this point, they do not have any other special progress reports or anything else that they need to do. The next part will be to start prepare for the decennial accreditation visit in 2022.
Is, has there ever been any discussion on what the advantage of doing the NEAS for the elementary program? You know, I, I've heard a lot of debate, even at the high school level, as far as how effective are the NEAS reports, and I know a lot of high schools get nervous to eliminate it because of students going to college and the credibility of the program offerings, but I didn't know if there's been discussion about the advantage of having that particular audit done for our elementary program. I know, obviously, it's nice to have someone come and take a look at us, but for a 30 potential thousand dollars.
So, I know Rob and I have talked a little bit about it, I know that one of the things is, this is, we don't do, we don't do the NIAC accreditation, so this is sort of the accreditation we're doing instead of a NIAC accreditation. I think prior to the, certainly, we can have more serious discussions prior to the decennial visit, and I think we can look into that, but I know the five-year report, I think, was due in October, so I don't know, Mr. Rulo, if you want to comment?
The reason when I came into the, took over as the leadership role, the NEAS report had just been accomplished. So we walked into that argument, they did it because they didn't want to go through the NIAC accreditation at that time. NIAC accreditation has become actually much more difficult, and it really only looks at one area, primarily the preschool and their kindergarten, I should say, but the NEAS did an overview of the entire school. So we used the report in the last five years in order to create what we have today, because they came back and explained certain programs, and talked about our mission and vision statement, and talked about curriculum guides and everything. So we've used that report in the last five years in order to build the school that we, that we are currently with. Whether or not it's a, it's a harrowing experience, it is to the staff and everybody, but I think it was a nice focal point to take a look at the school and where it was some five, six years ago, and now where we are on our way today, so I can see those improvements as, as we went along. So for that reason, it's been a benefit, I think it's been a benefit to us, and we use it during our staff meetings to explain to people, this is what the NEAS report says, this is the reason why we're doing certain things, this is an outside agency that came in and looked us over, and used our strengths, and here are the areas that we need to build upon, so...
But I do think the point is well taken, that I think even with, I think with a lot of things, just in general, in terms of, you know, the MCAS tests and the competency determinations and all those types of things, that there has been a lot of questions, particularly at the high school level, about what is the benefit necessarily of the NEAS accreditation? It used to always be that big, that big threat, like, if you're not accredited, colleges won't let you in, that kind of stuff, which, you know, so there's been some changes on that over the years, and honestly, this is the first time I've really worked in a system where we had a NEAS working at a, at a school that wasn't the high school. We always just worked with the NEAS at the high school, and we did the NIAC accreditations for our early childhood programs, and really nothing for those other ones. So I do think, you know, at this point, we've pretty much completed this process, there's nothing that they really have to do at this point until we get close to the decennial accreditation in 2022, so I think we should, we'll revisit this and continue to have conversations prior to us engaging into a self-study site visit, all that stuff for the next round, to make sure that it really is where we want to focus our efforts.
Can we, and I, I think everything you're saying makes sense, and thank you for your feedback. Can we, as we're moving forward, explore what other communities are doing?
No doubt.
Because I know that there's communities that are looking for alternative options, and maybe they're going to come across something that might be worth us looking into.
I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else?
All right. One other, the next one on here I put is drug dogs, I don't know if that's the best way to, to say it or not, but, but the, so this is just something, it's not, you know, added to the agenda, I talked to Mr. Hastings about it, it's nothing that we're adding in any, you know, this isn't a response to anything, but this is something that when I was in, when I was in Winchton, when I was in Athol, it is something that we worked at the local police department to kind of have the drug dogs come on campus periodically, you know, a couple of times a year, maybe. They like it, you can set it up as coming through, and maybe doing trainings, they'll, you know, they'll plant something for the dog to find, and do that kind of stuff. So the, so the, what we did find, though, what I think I found, was it really served as a, as a strong deterrent to keep the students from being drugged into the school buildings, and we just felt that, kind of, you know, through our conversations, we felt that, you know, given the, given the climate of, you know, we're always hearing about opioids and, and all the different, different drugs going on, if it might not be time to maybe consider doing something like, like that. You know, we did talk a little bit, I know Mr. Hastings talked to the school resource officer a little bit about it, I talked to the chief a little bit about it, just to see if they had, you know, what they thought about, if they had access to it, that kind of stuff. Like I said, it's not a, this isn't like a reaction, it wasn't like some event that happened that we're saying, like, now we need to get the drug dogs in, it's just something that you're kind of seeing with, with, with the, just, like, maybe the changes in society right now, that it's sort of, might be something to, for us to investigate going forward, just as a way of really keeping, you know, making it that this isn't a place that you can try to, you know, sneak stuff in your locker or something like that, and sending a clear message on that. So I don't know, it really is just on here as a discussion, and I don't know how the committee feels about it, and some of you guys have some experience in your own school districts, but I think they may or may not do it, so I don't know, I don't know what your take is.
Thoughts, impressions, questions?
You know, I've been a part of it in the past, and, you know, I, I feel like, you know, a lot of times, it's a good community relationship with the law enforcement and the schools, and getting familiar with the school at the same time of going through. You know, the reality is, a lot of students don't keep stuff in school, so if you're going to have the time to have them come in, then you take advantage of the entire school rounds.
I think it's a good idea. If anything else, help identify a student that may be, you know, struggling with some problems, you probably otherwise wouldn't know that if, if a dog was able to, you know, identify something in his locker, so just as a preventative measure, I think, I think it's a good idea. Do you, any idea, like, frequency, like, they would just be random, like sweeps, a couple of times a year or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, when I was in Athol, I think we did it two or three times a year. We'd just bring them through, they'd go through the parking lot, they'd go, they'd go through the hallways and kind of the classrooms, and, and it's really, that's our experience with it, it was very, you know, it was very low-key, the, the dogs are very well-trained, they have just a little, like, a little signal, they'll almost kind of just sort of like sit or do whatever they do at the, if they get a hit on anything, and, and like I said, usually, we didn't get hits, you know, normally it was, you know, kids knew, and, and we didn't really find, you know, usually, there were some, but, and then it's always kind of fun when you watch at the end, because they plant something and the dog finds it, and then they give them all the praise, because it's kind of like training for the dog, too, a little fun, but it's, but it's, you know, that's a, so I just, you know, I wanted to at least have the discussion and see what the, what the thoughts were.
I'm for it. So is that the kind of thing that we want to have our policy subcommittee?
Yeah.
Take a look at existing MASC advisories, and how that might impact Mass General Law and so forth, and just, you know, make sure that we're crafting some language that, that works. I would agree. I think it's a proactive, you know, approach, and, and a message, a strong message to our community, our community of learners, but our extended community as well, that, you know, a physically and emotionally safe environment is, is our goal for all, so, all right, thank you.
So I think, so I guess I'll take away from this conversation, there's generally the support for this, I think our next homework will be to maybe dig up some policy or something, so that we can get that approved prior to implementing it, so we're very clear on all those type of legal implications, and have that spelled out. Footsteps to Brilliance, so, in the, in the never-ending footsteps to Brilliance financing saga, the, originally, if you remember, we, we were going to get a five-year financing, then we got the four-year instead, we looked at the four-year, although it was a higher payment, it was going to end up saving us a little bit of money, maybe like $400, I think at that time. Now there's another financing option, because there were other communities who fell in the same boat as us, where they weren't, they, due to the, whatever the factors were, size of the community, those types of things, they did not get approved for the, the five-year financing arrangement. So what we did is, the FLAC board, so I'm, I'm on the, the FLAC board, the FLAC board has agreed to act as sort of the financial agent for the financing. And so what we have the option of doing right now is two things, we can either pursue with our, go on the same path we're going now with the four-year financing, or we could elect to be part of the FLAC collaborative financing, that would extend it out to five years. Karen and I looked at the net change, it would reduce our payment each year by a few thousand dollars. In the long run, it would cost us $150 more, but it would...
Total?
Total, like, over the, over a total of five years, $150 is the net change. The reason why I think the, the FLAC financing might be the way to go is because with, remember when we were, when we were doing the financing on our own, we were actually financing the entire amount, and then we had to get the 50% contribution from United Way to us, and then we had to pay our 50%, and that's how it went. If we, if we financed through FLAC, the United, that portion of the United Way liability is not, is not ours.
It's not contingent upon...
Right, all we are signing up for is our portion, because the United Way funds are going directly to FLAC. So there's a kind of a reduction in our borrowing liability, if you'd say, or the lease, it's not really borrowing, it's the lease, but the, so that's, so that's the, you know, the, and there's not a lot, there's, there's really information in your packet on this, I apologize, I printed this out this morning, because they're sending different revisions of this contract and everything as we speak, because the FLAC board just voted on this on Thursday. I did speak to Mike Ward about it on Thursday, he was fine with, he said, we're fine with the four-year plan if we want to stay that way, he said we could go with this one, you know, either one, he said, would be, would follow the, the, we're, we're fine either way, you know?
But this is... But this is informational for us. We've already approved your going forward with footsteps to brilliance.
Right. I'd say if you wanted me to go with the FLAC financing opportunity instead of the government capital financing, we would probably vote to say that, that we're going to go through FLAC instead of finance on our own, since we already made a vote, a motion to vote through government capital. So that's the, that is the, I guess that would be the motion that we would need. So what would this do in the long run? Right now, we're going to pay roughly, it was like $9,000 and change. So right now, we pay roughly $10,000 a year for four years and we would, at the end of four years, we own these licenses forever. But really, even though we're paying $40,000, we're actually financing 80 because we're getting 50% contributions from the United Way along the way. If we go with FLAC, it's a five-year financing where we're going to pay about $8,000 a year. So it's both right around $40,000, this is the total, it's $150 difference. It's five years, at the end of the five years, we own the license forever. But now, we're not really financing necessarily anything. FLAC is doing the financing, we're signing a contract agreeing to purchase this from FLAC every year. So it's a little bit of a, financially, I think it's a little bit less risky and cleaner for us to go the FLAC route.
And, and I apologize, but just for the paper, for, for our extensive home viewing audience, can you just, 30 second reminder of what footsteps to brilliance is and how, you know, what a, what an asset, a resource that would be for our community?
So footsteps to brilliance is a, an early literacy initiative. It's essentially an online, it's like an app to develop early literacy. It is research-based, it has been used extensively in other districts. I think you said there, when you guys were in Florida, you saw there was a district that was using it, there's some in California that have been using it. And the United Way is championing this effort. And where the reason they're paying 50% is because what we want, the goal is for all the communities that are in this innovation zone, we're going to make it so that anyone in town is able to access this resource. So it's going to become a community resource. So it doesn't matter if you're a homeschool student, it doesn't matter if you're three years old and not enrolled in Clinton Public Schools yet, it is a resource that's available. So that's why the United Way is paying 50%. So they're basically saying, we're covering the cost for those kids, basically zero to three, and then you're covering the cost for the kids that are kind of in your, in your school. From what we've heard from most of research, research, it's most effective to kids up to grade one. So we would expect that this would be getting a lot of usage in potentially our pre-K, K in grade one for all learners. And then in the, for the upper grades, it might be more based on sort of your, your reading level at that point. Yeah. And so, you know, and it's a, it's an opportunity, kids can do it over the summer, we can actually gather some data on who's logging in, who's accessing, what they're reading, those types of things. Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh did it this past summer and I know the superintendent issued a challenge to read like 3 million books or something like that and then he had to change the whole initiative like two weeks later because they reached the goal already. So it was, so that was a, you know, so it's, there, Pittsburgh has said they've had a lot of, a lot of good success with it and they feel it's a good way. It kind of, what it is replacing, if you've ever been part of the, if you've ever heard of like the Dolly Parton book program, and so if you live in like Pittsburgh or certain communities, I don't know if Clinton was part of that or not, but the United Way would fund this program where you could basically just go online and sign up and they would mail you free books to your house. And it was through the Dolly Parton Library. And United Way had done that program for a long, long time, but they haven't really ever gotten any research or proof of the effectiveness of it. So the United Way wanted to back this program instead. And so that's, that's sort of why, that's how they are interested in it. And then they are, they have, they do have a lot of donors who are lined up to support this commitment. So, so the question is just, you know, at this point, we can go, we've made the motion right now as it stands for us to basically go it alone. We go our own, we do our independent financing of the four years. The alternative on the table right now is to sign on as part of the FLAC financing group. The people who are actually financing through FLAC would be, were listed on here as a potential and then Narragansett, Gardner, Winchden and Lunenburg, basically based on the size of their communities are all going through the FLAC collaborative. I know that like Leominster, Pittsburgh, North Middlesex are able to, they were able to secure the five-year funding, I believe, on their own, five-year financing on their own.
Can, can you explain for the public about, you know, how we're a member of FLAC and what that means and what the advantages of us continue to work with FLAC in situations like this?
So FLAC is our, it's like, it's a special education collaborative and there's, originally it was like Pittsburgh-
Leominster, Lunenburg.
Leominster, Lunenburg, was it?
I think Lancaster might have been one of the original L's when it first formed.
Lancaster.
Yeah, Lancaster was in it and then, and then Air and then Clinton is the C at the end. It's expanded much larger than that now over the years, different, different people have joined it. But the collaborative allows us to do different services to support the members. So FLAC rents buildings at the middle school, rents spaces at the middle school and in other facilities to run specialized special education programs that we can send our students at at sort of a discounted member rate. There are also additional services, I know the VGO we needed at the, which you've seen presentations on that we needed for a student at the elementary school, we were able to rent that through FLAC. If you need specialized other types of services, different, different specialists to provide services for a student, you can usually access those through FLAC. So those are, it's, it's, it's essentially, it's kind of, sort of, you know, it is really almost for this, it's kind of that purchasing power of these things that maybe you can't do as a, as one school, you don't have enough for that program, but as a collaborative, you can run that program. So it really does fit the sort of this venue where they're saying, well, we can help you out, so being kind of your fiscal agent here, financing, United Way will just pay us directly. So then really their, their financial liability is very limited because they know they have the commitment from the United Way and, and then from us, the same thing, it's ours is now more, our liability is limited because we're not responsible for the United Way part. On paper, we just really, we're not really financing directly, we're signing a contract with FLAC agreeing to pay this each year.
Thank you for the additional detail.
So I think I'd make a motion that we finance footsteps to brilliance through FLAC.
Okay.
Second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Good job, Ed.
Any further discussion? All right, there being none, all those in favor? And thank you for the time and effort you've put into, into this. I really do think it's a tremendous investment in our community, not, both in school and beyond.
And I have a, I have a meeting, I have a phone call, excuse me, tomorrow at 8:15 to let them know kind of what decision we made so we can get rolling because we're hoping that they can even start rolling out after the, once, after the first of the year, kind of get us, you know, start the onboarding process to get us up to speed. All right. The last little update here, Solec Solar Panels. I know that the Solec, the company that did the solar panel study has gotten back to the town about the DPW building and they have everything in place for that to move forward. The town, they're going to be, the Board of Selectmen are going to entertain that and review that on Wednesday at their meeting. They have not got us, they have not completed the, they've not got the necessary energy agreements or whatever it is from National Grid for our buildings yet. So they're still working on it. I just wanted to, I know the Board of Selectmen are going to be talking about that, so I want you guys to think like, whatever happened to ours, they're still working on it, it's not that it hasn't, it's not just gone away.
Last, not what we know.
Yeah. All right. So district strategy. So as part of the, you know, as part of coming on, as a superintendent new to the district, I completed the, my entry plan where we did the meeting and I reported that, that result of entry findings. And then you can see here, this is, this is basically a strategy document that's in there, in your packet. And so it starts at the top with the mission, Clinton Public Schools. That's the mission that has been here, there are no changes to that at this, at this time. The vision, those are just draft thoughts, those are things that we came up with as the administrators over the, over the summer retreat. And my goal is that the mission, vision and even the core values would all get sort of reviewed and potentially revised or crafted during the strategic planning process, which hopefully will start in, will get started in, around February or so. The core values, we talked about, you know, our sort of draft as administrators was to look at, you know, basically the three areas, sort of like academics, another one being your, you know, physical and mental health or wellness, and the third one being part of the community. And that's sort of the three buckets that we kind of found that all our sort of initiatives sort of fell in and the things that we really prioritized. But once again, I'm not necessarily pitching the mission, vision and core values right now, those are just part of this document as they stand, those are things I think we would vet during the strategic planning process with more community input. Theory of action is kind of the first thing. The theory of action kind of comes from looking at the, the entry plan findings and saying, what are we going to do about these findings to try to move the district forward? So the theory of action created is if Clinton Public Schools implements a vertically-aligned, comprehensive curriculum, provides support to teachers to ensure best instructional practices are being used in each classroom, utilizes assessment data to tailor instruction to meet the needs of all students, and supports and engages students and parents, then the instructional efforts will be more focused and efficient, thus resulting in improved student achievement. So those are kind of the things that, you know, there's, there's a handful of clauses there to kind of sequentially walk you through different things. And then you can see how those are broken down below into sort of these kind of initiatives under curriculum, instruction, assessment and student support. So under curriculum, our initiatives would be to develop a comprehensive vertically-aligned curriculum, develop programming at the middle and high school levels to focus on college and career readiness, and to create a structure for curriculum and instructional leadership. Under instruction, it's going to be to develop a structure to improve tier-one classroom instruction through coaching, refine the model for supporting special education students, improve the model for supporting English language learner students, and supporting teachers in the use of instructional technology. In an assessment, develop an assessment calendar and system of common assessments, implement a systemic method for gathering and analyzing data to drive instruction, and use assessment data to plan and implement appropriate interventions, in parentheses, as I said, the win block. And for student support, review and update the student code of conduct and staff responses to support social, emotional learning, continue to refine and expand the PBS program at all levels, refine and improve communication home to support parents and students, and expand after-school programming to engage and support students and families. And I think if you look at these bullets, pretty much all of these bullets address the findings, the 11 or so findings, I think it was, that were in the report of entry findings. So this strategy has been developed to try to take the, the findings that we presented in October and say, what are some, what are some initiatives that we can put in place to try to address those findings? So I'm presenting this to you tonight as sort of the, as sort of a draft strategy. It's been shared with our administration, it's been shared with the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee. You know, I, I guess initially it would be sort of a general, if you have any thoughts or comments on this, the direction of it, if there's anything that you feel is, you know, you have questions on or you think is, is missing?
Questions, thoughts, comments?
I think it's very well done. Very pleased to see the focus that the tier-one supports in the classroom.
So, you know, I don't know, I don't know if we need to vote to approve this strategy, moving forward the strategy at this point, or if it's still too much of a draft form, if you just want me to continue working on it and refining it?
Do you want, well, do you want to have the opportunity to clarify some of the draft thoughts and the vision and core values?
Yeah, I don't think we would, the only part I, I wouldn't want that to be, you know, basically if you're, the theory of action and the, and the initiatives at the bottom would be the only thing we'd want to maybe approve, but we don't need to vote it right now if we don't want to. I think this is, but what it would be is a sort of, this is maybe just a check, that this is sort of the initiatives that I want to use as sort of what we're, what we're working under, what we're guiding some of our budget development under, which is why this is a timely discussion now. So that as we're building our budget, we can try to support these initiatives and we help clarify what's going to be priorities in our budget as we go forward. I can then incorporate this as we do the strategic planning process and we can try to make this more of a, maybe encompassed into the strategic planning document and then it could get maybe formally approved at that time, if that's, if you're comfortable with that.
I mean, I think, you know, just whatever's easiest for your administrative team to use this as a guide for, you know, the work together in developing the budget.
Okay.
I think it's tremendous work. I think there has been a consistent pattern of a transparent through line, going back to the needs assessments and your entry plan and the reporting on the entry plan. And I just appreciate the volume of work that's gone into such a thoughtful document.
All right. So with that in mind, the next, the next topic I have under here is the, the FY19 budget preliminary discussion. So if you remember, we shared the budget timetable with you a couple of meetings ago, I think now. And so we've been going along that process. At this point, we have received draft budgets from all the principals, those were received on December 8th, I want to say. Karen has been working to compile those into the budget document. Karen's also been working diligently to update contracts as we get that information, put some assumptions in for different things. Our goal is to roll out to you an initial draft on January 8th of the budget. Now, what I want to warn you about of the January 8th draft that you're going to receive, it is, it's probably going to be very high, okay? Because there are things that we're going to be putting in there that are, that are then things that at this point, they're sort of, they're sort of needs that we're going to look at and we're saying, these are different areas that we think we want to explore. I don't even know what the bottom number is yet right now because I gotta, we're still pulling those numbers together. But I just don't want it to be confused. So on January 8th, like if we come out with a preliminary draft budget, it's not meant that that's something that's going to be, that's not town floor ready. Let's put it that way. That's, that's a starting point, that then we're going to look back at things like our strategic document we just talked about, we're going to look at different things that we, we want to prioritize as we then, as we get, as we learn about different revenue sources, different things.
So January 8th is not, would not technically be considered our public hearing on the budget?
No, not at all. No. January 8th is just an initial, we're just trying to, basically all these different ideas we're talking about and different things we want to look at. I mean, I told Karen today, like one of the things we'll do for the January 8th budget is we're going to fund athletics 100%. It means we would, if we could keep that number in the budget, there'd be no user fees. You know what I mean? Like that type of things. But now, is that going to last as we look through the budget? I don't know. I mean, that's where as we go along, we have to prioritize different things and we have to see how that look out, how would that work out? And, and a lot of that's going to be up in the air because there's going to be a lot of assumptions in that initial budget because we don't have all our figures yet. And as we get more information, we'll be able to say, you know, hey, we projected this tuition rate to increase 3%, it actually went up 1.9% or it actually went up 5.2%. And we'll be able to continue to refine that over a few months. But what we do want to do is give you sort of the January 8th budget is going to be sort of those initial draft requests so we can sort of see where, what our starting point is. And then we'll continue to refine that and make sure that we're highlighting our different priorities that we want to look at as we go through there. Okay? So just, you know, I think it's a good start. I think in January to have that put together would be a good timeframe, but it's going to be far from, far from perfect and far from, from done. Some staffing assumptions, so this is a couple of big discussions I'd like to have. The first one under there is grade four to the elementary school. So I have talked to the middle school faculty, I've had a lot of conversations with, with Rob and Meg at the elementary school and with Emery and Bob at the, at the middle school and then with, as a whole administrative team, actually, we've had a lot of conversations about this. And then I talked to the middle school faculty at a faculty meeting, I also met with the fourth grade teachers to talk to them a little bit about this, to tell them that at this point, that this, basically at this school community meeting, I was going to bring it up for discussion as we build our budget for next year. So one of the things is, you know, I, I believe that from a space standpoint and from an educational kind of developmental standpoint, putting the fourth grade back in the elementary school is something that makes sense. If we were to do that, there's some other changes that would naturally come. Now we'd have to look at, you know, different support staff and specials and those types of things in the elementary school. So this is one of those sort of, kind of major changes that will drive a lot of how the rest of our budget goes. I know in previous meetings, we've talked about potentially moving the fourth grade to the elementary school, we've also talked about potential looking at the eighth grade to the high school. As I said in, in different meetings in the fa, with the faculty in the fourth grade, my concern with moving the eighth grade to the high school at this time is that we know that we have those two large grades that are coming up into the high school. And at this time, we're also in the process with the Perkins grant we just got and those types of things, of looking on, on adding additional programming into the high school. So I would hate to sort of constrain ourselves in that aspect right away. However, I do think, you know, moving the fourth grade out of the middle school opens up some space for us in the middle school. And then the goal is going to be to try to, to look at our staffing and try to more efficiently arrange it so that we are able to try to get class sizes a little bit under control at the middle school level. And if you look on that, there is a page in here and right after the strategy that talks of- about some of this stuff. So it says current draft staffing plan. So so far, we've had a few budget meetings where we've looked at staffing as an administrative team, and looking at trying to figure out number of sessions, sections for projected class size. This is sort of how we kind of have it laid out right now in a draft form, because we're looking at it just from a standpoint of, basically, would this work? If we were going to do this, how would it work? We feel that we could get those class-sized numbers and have adequate support for our special education and our interventions, and actually, at this point, it would be a, essentially, a zero, zero net change in staffing. It would represent a level-staffed budget. So the, the only, the two that stand on that page, grades seven and eight, you can see those class sizes are kind of fairly low. They're probably wouldn't, in actuality, be that low in practice next year, because what we would probably do is like an eighth-grade team, instead of them, that's based on them teaching, say, like, five sections of eighth-grade math. Well, when we actually look at the numbers, if they're that low, we might be able to do, say, four sections of eighth-grade math, and then that fifth teaching period could be an enrichment class or a support class to kind of spread that out. But what we're doing by keeping those grades, those, potential for those to be low, is that we're building a structure that's going to be able to absorb the fifth and the sixth grade class as they come forward, because we have those larger classes coming up right below it. So that's, that's sort of the, you know, the initial questions, you know, it would be, fourth grade, I don't know what the committee stands on if we want to move forward. I guess at this point, I'd be sort of asking if the committee is on board with moving forward, planning for the fourth grade to be relocated to the elementary school next year. And I could certainly explain anything else if, before we go.
Thoughts? Questions? I mean, are we improving this move right now, or is this?
It would be up to you to figure out what you, what level of, what you would like to do. I could, we could also determine next steps. I mean, I could do a, you know, I could hold a community meeting or something where we offered anyone who had thoughts or concerns about that to come in and meet. We could, I could get you more information regarding the space of the elementary school and what that would look like next year. Any of those thoughts or concerns that you have, we could address that in a future meeting. But I think at this point, it's just where, as we look at trying to build the budget for next year, we've got to start getting some of those, some of those areas in place. So there's a couple pieces to a puzzle, so if I can sort of explain it. If we want to try to sort of restructure some things in the middle school so that we can try to make some of the class sizes smaller, so for example, right now, there are seven sections of grade five, and there are six sections of grade six. Next year, we're going to need eight sections in both of those classes. So that's really, that's three classroom teachers' spaces I need to add. The fourth grade coming in is a little bit smaller, they would drop down to seven, that's one I pick up. I'm at a, I'm at minus two rooms right now in the, in the, in the middle school. We just don't have space in that to do those types of things. And then the, I think the sections at the highs, at the grades in seventh and eighth grade are, it's like, how many, seventh and, seventh-grade teachers and eighth-grade teachers, it's like seven and six. And this would have it at a combination, it would have it, it would have basically 15 allocated to that grade span, although they'd be able to do possibly some other things. So to, to kind of create this opportunity to sort of redistribute some things, it creates some, some need for some classroom spaces at the middle school. So one piece of the puzzle, in order to address some of the class size issues at the middle school, is to create space. If you move the fourth grade down, that helps create space. We have space at the elementary school. There are rooms that are just not being used or used very, you know, a large room for a purpose that doesn't need a large room. The other thing is, if you go back to the strategy, the strategy talks about trying to create more of an instructional leadership-type, type model. One of the thoughts is that if we were to go to adding the fourth grade in the elementary school, that we would try to create a position known as, call it like a dean of students' position. So that dean of students' position would be someone we'd probably leave in the teacher contract, it wouldn't be considered like an administrative position, but that person would be the one who would do things like, you know, check it on recess, lunch duty, handling the minor classroom disruption things, where at the elementary school, a lot of that stuff is more of a, you're processing with a student, you may be making a phone call home, and you're, and you're kind of getting the kid back to class. What that would allow, is that would allow to take the assistant principal at that level and make the assistant principal, who would still be housed in that building, as more of a assistant principal for like curriculum and instruction, to help provide that layer of instructional leadership by freeing that position up out of the day-to-day firefighting, for lack of a better term. Still there when it's needed, still there if there's an incident that could elevate to something that's a, you know, a suspension or something like that, although they're very, they're less frequent at the, at the elementary school, certainly. But, and also, the principal would still be involved in that process as well. So the, it's sort of like the, that comes down, that makes that school bigger, now we can sort of add this support position as a dean of students, that's going to allow us to create some of this instructional leadership that we feel has kind of been, been lacking. So this person would be kind of be able to take over some of that, you know, really getting more focused on the, being involved with the evaluation process and developing curriculum and running meetings with teachers, and try to make that one, since it's elementary, it would support K through six. So there'd even be some days that that person would come work on the curriculum and support the fifth and sixth grade. Yeah?
Dr. Meyer, if, so, go ahead. I'm sorry. I mean, if, so you did this evaluation, you said that you were at negative two classrooms at the middle school. So I mean, I don't know, what other option? I appreciate that, and I asked for an explanation, like, you know, why we were doing it, but like, if, if we're at negative two at the middle school, I mean, what other option?
Oh, you wanted me to stop?
No!
I had you at negative two.
As soon as I heard we're at negative two, I was like, it makes sense, we don't have the room. I mean, is that, is it that simple, or am I?
No, that's part of it. I mean, you could say maybe there's some oversimplification there, because obviously, as we rearrange some other staffing, some other spaces might be available. But I do think that the, the middle school is a very overcrowded facility right now.
Right.
And if you look, you know, we're having common planning meetings and different things in kind of like, you know, the back room of the library, which is kind of like a storage room, or, you know, like it's, so I just think you would be able to, I think giving a little more space there would allow us to kind of spread these classes out and hopefully even open up some of the smaller rooms that now people are kind of tucked into, to be more professional areas that we could actually have meetings where people aren't tripping over each other. So I think that that, that would address a couple of things. I don't know, Mike, you had a comment?
So you already started to touch upon where I was going to go, so I kind of have two questions. So if we're moving the fourth grade down, we're overcapacity as far as some of the, how we're using our space at the middle school. As we take the fourth graders out, I would just ask that we take some consideration into rehabbing spaces that we take offline, you know, so that, you know, it's one of those things where if we have a room that's broken up, you know, we consider refurbishing those rooms, you know, using time of it not being accessed by the students, so that as time goes on, we're making all of our classrooms that much more current-day, you know, state.
At the middle school, you're saying?
At the middle school.
So you're saying, like, basically, I hear what you're saying. So if we basically moved eight teachers out, but then we're adding different teachers in, if we have a net surplus of a couple rooms now that are open, rehab those a little bit maybe while they're not there, so that then, and then kind of start that process?
Because we have some rooms that are really rough-shaped, and I'm only having us, you know, consider doing something like that if that's a building that we're going to keep online.
Yeah.
If we're, future plans, you know, lead us a different direction, then reconsider what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But if we're going to be long-term investment in the middle school, I think we have to get creative at doing things like that moving forward. My other, I guess, question is, I would ask you to consider, instead of a dean of students, a social worker.
Okay.
Okay? Because I feel like a lot of what is done in elementary school as far as, you know, matters where students have discipline concerns or other issues, you know, at that age level, those are teachable moments, those are opportunities for the person to connect with them, see how they're doing, see if there's other concerns, see if there's family concerns, and I feel like if we have a, you know, qualified social worker, adjustment counselor, that they can, you know, meet what?
Kind of acting in that capacity. They're still going to be able to meet the needs of that student support component.
Right.
I mean, that's really what we're trying to do, is create that, that other position that's going to be kind of quasi-admin, but not, not admin, because it's really strictly going to work with students, not evaluating teachers, not doing it, right?
Right.
And then, and the other, the other strategy of that is, by keeping that position as being a position that can stay within the teachers' union, that is also something that, let's say, let's say we use this model for two or three years, and we feel that we've come a long way in our curriculum, and now we're, our budgets are tight, and we need to kind of reassess something, okay, maybe that, maybe that position has to go away at some point down the road, and the shift of the assistant principal has to go back to being everything. And then, if that's the case, that person would be able to sort of slide back into the teachers' association. So I don't want to, I don't want to create a position that we're going to, that we can't necessarily talk about some long-term sustainability for. So the, so that's, that's one of the, so that's another part of the puzzle. And then the other idea is, as in looking at our Title I funds, to try to also incorporate one of the, think of our Title I staff as more K to six, and to try to look at how we schedule wind blocks, so that some of our Title I teachers might even travel during the day, so that they're able to access, so we can basically be like a Title I sort of SWAT team accessing the wind blocks. And then, at least one of those Title I teachers we'd like to, at least one of those Title I positions we'd like to try to create would be a literacy coach, at least for next year, to try to start providing more, more, you know, instruction to the teachers in the classroom. I think starting with literacy makes sense, because we are still kind of new in the foundations world, we'll be increasing foundations to the third grade next year, so having a literacy coach to help support the implementation of that and other things is going to be, is going to be, I think, beneficial. So I think it's kind of a, like I said, sort of like a puzzle, that I think if it all kind of fits together, where by moving the fourth grade down, it gives us an opportunity to kind of reexamine the sort of administrative aspects of the elementary office to provide more of that curriculum leadership that we want to try to get. It also creates opportunities at the middle school to try to get a little space, get our class sizes a little better, try to look at how we arrange things that way. So that's the rationale. On top of that, now you get, you know, the fourth grade gets to play on the nice new playground.
Well, yeah. So I think for me, the logistical, the resource concerns are significant, but, and I want to be very clear, Mrs. Sargent and her team do a great job keeping that fourth grade very much an elementary program in a middle school, but, but at the end of the day, they're still elementary-level kids, so I think it makes sense to explore and to see, you know, what kind of gains we get, not only for, for that group of learners, but, but for the middle school as a whole. So I'm in support of it.
But, yeah, go ahead with it. My recommendation, maybe, go ahead with what you, you know?
I don't think it necessarily needs a vote either, because you're certainly empowered to look at programming, but we can vote if you want the public support.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it would be, it would be good to have a vote. We don't necessarily need it at this meeting if you don't want to. We could wait and, you know, if we, if anyone has any, if anyone, if anyone in our vast viewership has any questions, they can contact me and do whatever.
Just in the sense that Mrs. Apantis isn't able to be here tonight, she's not feeling well, so, so I think, you know, she'll, she certainly has had the pack, and I'm sure she's up to speed on it, but just, I think, you know, certainly you have our support, but rather than taking a vote, why don't we wait until she has an opportunity to weigh in?
But I guess, I guess the only caveat then would be though, as we're putting together this budget for January 8th, this is what it's going to reflect.
Yes.
And then, and if we need to
It'll reflect.
Change it, we can change the move. It's going to reflect the move.
Okay.
Yeah. Couple other things that will be reflected in that move, so thank you, by the way, for that discussion and those questions. We are exploring the possibility of looking at a middle school, high school, we're kind of calling right now like a guidance and career counselor, and the idea with that might be someone who could, as we're trying to develop these Perkins programs and vocational programs, and really work more on career interest inventories and those types of things at the middle school level. So we're trying to, we kind of have that penciled in in our staffing, and also looking at a, trying to add a foreign language teacher that would be, offer a language different than Spanish. Once again, that's a position that might have to be shared between the middle school and the high school in year one, at least, as you kind of build the program, if, you know, so to speak, because you're only going to be able to offer year one of a language the first year. But those are two positions right now that we're trying to, to look at, and that person could then maybe, you know, let's say, just say it was French, I'm trying to, there isn't a decision on that, but if it was French, that person could teach maybe a couple of classes of French at the high school while doing some introductory French to seventh or eighth graders at the middle school, and to try to build that up, so that now, then the next year, when they can take, teach French too, we can kind of build up their schedule and that kind of stuff. So that's, those are different positions. Those are still in the exploring, we're trying to fit all these things together and try to see if we can pull all that off. I already went over some of these instructional leadership changes here, moving fourth grade, we have that there. Other considerations, we are putting some budget placeholders in for enrichment programs, intervention programs, and some early college and career programming. So we've met with some different curriculum companies and software companies recently to look, explore different types of intervention programs, some computer-based, some more instructional-based, but trying to find those types of things. Some of those might qualify for Title I, those types of things, but we're trying to get those in. And then the capital request and the director of facilities request, so we'll, we'll look at those things. I know Russ was here earlier today, but I know Russ was saying, you know, by, oh, he's still here. He was talking, I figured he left already, no one wants to hear me talk for two hours. But the, the, some of Russ's initial thoughts, we're looking at the square footage of our buildings, he said we're probably about a custodian short in each building. So one of those things where, not necessarily going to add that into the budget, we'll work with him to refine those, but we're going to try to make sure that some of those needs are at least reflected in one of those initial drafts, so that we can get that there. And
Did you fix the ventilation? I notice it's very quiet.
I think it's because it was 1,000 degrees, so we just shut everything off, but. So I think that's about all I had right now for the FY19 budget discussion. The only other thing I had on there was contractual increases, so the biggest thing to understand, too, before we get too crazy with trying to cut this, or cut that, or do this, we are in contract negotiations right now with our largest union. So until that contract looks like it's either close to settled, or at least there's a preliminary agreement on next year's wages, we, you know, everything is sort of subject to some change with that. So, but we are trying to, and like I said, Karen's going through and updating things based on the contracts we do have, that we know our contractual obligations, so we can move forward as best as we can. So I think that's all I have for you.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Am I correct, and is there anything new from either the marketing or the policy subcommittee?
Uh-uh.
Thank you both.
I'll send a list out. We, yeah, we made a list of like, some, our top, like, six or seven things we want.
Do you want to report on it?
No, I'll, I still haven't, I don't have it put together yet, I'll send it out to the board.
So you really don't have this?
I do, but I just, let's, let's get going.
So the only additional item that I'd like to ask for is your permission to send out a timeline in terms of our superintendent's evaluation cycle, just because we have the mid-year evaluation coming up potentially February, so I think just to be thinking about, you know, what he's been able to report out on, vis a vis his goals, the progress toward those goals, the entry plan, and the rubric, which I think you've had in the past, but I'll share with everyone on the committee. And so to be thinking about, you know, the month of January, and reflecting on what he has shared with us as a committee thus far, and how that informs your feedback through me to him for the mid-year evaluation.
And I can certainly, if there's anything you need, I can do, you know, I know, for example, I could potentially do like a, sort of a self-assessment, where I kind of say where I feel I fit, and I can maybe put some notes in there of some evidence or documents that I feel might reflect why I would say that. I don't necessarily have to pull all the evidence together for you, but I might say like, you know, the, you know, under budgets, I might say, yeah, I think I was proficient, see the budget presented on January 8th, or something like that. So if that's something that you want, certainly when you kind of come up with that timeline, I can do something like that.
Self-assessment?
Yeah. Okay. So I can do, I'll do a self-assessment based on my goals and the rubric, and try to cite some evidence for you, and then you guys can, and maybe, maybe we can shoot for sort of an end-of-January timeline for me to put that together, if you're comfortable with that.
Sure.
Then we'll get it to you guys, so you can digest it if you have questions, and then maybe in February, we could do sort of that informative assessment, mid-year assessment.
Yeah. Perfect. Everyone's all right with that?
Yes.
Anything under old business? Anything under new business?
I got to have something good. We talk with this, I got to have something good.
So before you share the good news, let's just go back, is there any other public comment? There being none, Mr. Bailey?
I just want to thank the Clinton Middle School, Mrs. Sargent, Mr. Seed, and your middle school teachers, Kelly, Pete, and Helen Carrigan, who helped us, we did a toy drive here last Sunday, and they collected, they filled two huge boxes, I think, in a couple hours up here, and as a town, we collected, in a four-hour period, we had about, just nearly 500 toys that we donated to, and they all go back into, the Marines distribute them through Worcester County, so I appreciate it, and I did put something in the item for them, but I just wanted you guys to hear from me, and I talked to you about it already.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the giving spirit. We will, we will enter into executive session, we have to adjourn this meeting first, we, we have to enter into executive session first, before we adjourn.
I know.
And we will not be reconvening into this meeting. So, under Chapter 38, Section 21 of Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss CTA, contracts, negotiation strategy, the committee will not reconvene, this requires a voice vote.
Brendan Bailey?
Aye.
Mike McIntyre?
Joel Bates?
Ed DeValta?
Aye.